Okay, we'll get started here. The amend approved agenda, is there any additions, deletions, or corrections at this time?
I just have a point of order, and that is when we get to the public hearing, you have a resolution in front of you that will allow you to take one action to approve all of the licenses.
Okay, good. Any other additions or corrections? If not, then I need a motion to approve the agenda.
I'll make that motion.
Second. All those in favor of passing the agenda say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed nay. Approved agenda is passed. Sub consent agenda, anything to be discussed on that? If not, then I need a motion to pass consent agenda.
Motion.
I'll second.
All those in favor of passing the consent agenda say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed nay. Consent agenda is passed. We'll start first up, visitors to the council.
Colton.
Colton?
Colton. Good evening, thanks for having me. My name is Christopher Colton. I'm the chief operating officer for CMMPA, or as we're now known, we've changed our name to Compass we're calling it, Central Municipal Power Agency and Services. And what I'm going to talk a little bit about tonight is some power supply coalition work that we've been doing for over a year now. What the results of that work are, what the recommendation for the city of Casson is part of that work, then I'll talk a little bit about kind of the next steps and what the process is. And I know Theresa had sent me an email yesterday with several questions. I'll cover those all, and if I don't, please feel free to ask. So, ask anytime. I know that, or this was placed in the agenda, correct?
Right, so they have, uh...
There's a recommendation, it's three pages, that is kind of the summary recommendation of what the agency is recommending for Casson as part of the power supply coalition study. And let me back up, just, I'll give you a brief background of what it is. We do a long-term planning study every two to four years, depending upon what's going on. By long-term, we're talking about 20-plus years of looking at power supply, looking at options. We went out for an RFP to vendors, to various counterparties in the market, for various products that we're looking for to help fill our members' needs. That process and that study has been going on, like I said, for over, almost a year and a half. The results of what you, the indicative or initial results of what you see in front of you. There are three other, two other participants, three total, in this coalition besides CMMPA. There's an agency in Wisconsin that's similarly situated to us, it's called UMEG, or the Upper Midwest Municipal Energy Group. They're very similar to us, they've got 15 members, mostly in Wisconsin, they've got a couple in Minnesota, and four, I think it is, in Iowa. So it's a group of small towns, similar to our agency, they're roughly the same size in load as we are. The other participant in this is Cedar Falls, Iowa Utilities, Cedar Falls Municipal Utility. They are a single municipal, obviously, but they are also similar in size to both us and UMEG. So the idea behind the coalition study was, let's bring the three together, let's study this in aggregate, and we're going to get better responses from vendors if we're going out and looking for a bigger chunk of power supply over long-term than if each of us went out individually. And that's what we got. We had 24 responses to the RFP, which include, 24 responses from 24 different market participants that, several included several different types of products. And the long and the short of what you see in front of you is the result of that study. So if you go to this slide, or what's called page two, in your handouts, essentially what we're talking about, and I should explain these terms, and I get a little wonky sometimes with using terms and throwing around acronyms because I've been in the business so long. So again, if I'm, if you're not clear in what I'm talking about, please, please, please ask. One of the options, or one of the things we're recommending is what's called a fixed-price base load product, or seven by 24. What that means is you're purchasing power at a fixed price for 10 years, for seven days a week, 24 hours a day. So it's every hour of the year, you're buying a certain amount of power at a fixed price. For Casson, we're recommending a half a megawatt of that. That would be in addition to the existing base load capacity you have from the nuclear, Whippy Nuclear Purchase. The second thing we're recommending is what we call a fixed-price five by 16. And what that means is that it's five days a week, Monday through Friday, 16 hours a day. So it's 8:00 AM to 10:00 PM essentially. And that's what's considered on-peak, which is when, you know, your highest uses are, your typical Monday through Friday, you know, day, during the day, essentially. And that is, again, it's a fixed-price purchase for a fixed number of hours a year. And for Casson, we're recommending one and a half megawatts of that. The third purchase is a combined cycle, and what that is, is it's an existing power plant in, that's in operation today, it's in Illinois, and we would be looking to buy a component of that power plant through a long-term PPA. It'd be similar to the way we structured the deals in the past with, you know, the Whippy Nuclear Purchase, or the NC2 coal unit, but we would be buying a small piece of a combined cycle. So we would recommend for Casson that your share of that would be 1.6 megawatts. And the last component is buying a piece of wind, 4.8 megawatts. And the wind is in here for one very specific reason and one reason only. And it's not for renewable energy credits, it's not for what may be happening in the future with regulatory requirements from the, you know, Clean Power Plan, EPA's plan, it's to hedge against natural gas prices going up. And there's a lot of study that went into that, to prove that it works, to make sure that it works. And the idea is that instead of going out and buying gas, because in the future, in the market we're in, the gas, the price of natural gas is going to directly drive, it does today, but it's even going to be more correlated, or more likely, that it's going to directly drive the price of electric energy that you're paying in the market. And wind, and if I can talk about that in more detail, if anybody's interested, the wind actually works as an excellent hedge against gas prices. And the reason is that the value of your wind is tied to gas, in that if gas prices go up, the cost of electricity goes up with it, and therefore, the value of that wind, if you're buying it at a fixed-price contract, increases with it. So as gas prices increase, the value of your wind increases, and that happens to correspond with, with gas. Like I said, there's, there's a long draw, we can get into a two-hour discussion on that, if anybody was interested, but the reality is that it works, we've proved it, it's been used before in Texas, and for us, a small agency like us, it actually works better as a gas hedge than buying gas, believe it or not, because we can tie the contracts to exactly what we need, instead of standard gas contracts. So the wind would be done on a 20-year contract, the combined cycle would be a 20-year contract, and the fixed-price energy, which is the, what we call a seven by 24 and five by 16, would be 10-year contracts. So what we're trying to do is diversify around what we're buying, diversify around terms, so that you've got a 10-year term and a 20-year term, and that in the long run, that will help greatly stabilize the agencies, and therefore, Casson's energy prices over the next 25 to 30 years. These contracts aren't scheduled to start until approximately 2020, and the main reason that we're looking at these contracts is to replace the existing five-by-16 contract we have, that's for 2.3 megawatts, that terminates or rolls off at the end of 2019. So January 1, 2020, we're looking to replace that existing contract. And so, part of the whole genesis of the power supply study is we knew for all of the members, all the members, yes, all the members participating in the current five-by-16 purchase, everybody has a bunch of, of their power supply that's rolling off. And so, this, this essentially is to replace that five-by-16, and to try to optimize the portfolio around, again, it's both, it's diversity of term and diversity of what you're purchasing. So we're not putting all of our eggs in one basket. So if you go to the next slide, which is the slide three on this graph, what this shows is, on a kind of a typical day, if you look at your power supply obligations, and you stack in your power supply resources, how you would meet those resources on a typical day, and it runs from 2014 out to approximately 2037. And again, you see in the bottom, the existing nuclear purchase, that's base load, that goes out into the 2030s. We're recommending the new combined cycle, which is 1.6 megawatts. Again, that runs, that's a 20-year contract. We're recommending the new seven by 24, which is essentially an additional half-megawatt of base load purchases, which is 10 years. The five-by-16, which is one and a half megawatts, which is 10 years. And you see that those all line up roughly with the end of the existing five-by-16 contract. The rest of the energy we're recommending is being purchased from the market, like we do today. And if you look at the wind, which is on top of this chart, again, the reason we're doing that, the reason we're recommending the wind is to not, to meet your, necessarily your energy obligations in any given hour, it's to hedge against future gas price increases, or potential gas price increases. So the gas is, or, I'm sorry, the wind is equivalent to gas, and we're recommending that it be done essentially as an insurance policy against gas prices going up. Because even though gas prices are low today, I don't think anybody expects that over the next 20 or 30 years, they're going to stay at, you know, three, $4 range that they are today. I mean, in 2007, '08, '09, gas is trading at eight, nine, 10 bucks. Now it's back down into the three to four range, so what we're trying to do is, if in the event that it goes to, back to eight, nine, 10 bucks, we've successfully hedged against that, and we're going to be able to hold our power supply costs down because of that. So that is the recommendation. There's a lot more detail that goes in behind that, I'm happy to talk to anybody about that, if you're, if you're interested either right now or offline later, and explain kind of how the process works and the why. The next thing that we're asking for is, we sent out, we're looking for a non-binding agreement, saying that, yes, you're interested in moving forward or not. And the whole purpose of this is essentially to make sure that the concept of what we're doing gets put in front of the councils and commissions of our members, to make sure that they have a chance to look at it, to think about it. The numbers that we've presented, the recommendations are essentially preliminary. What's going to happen in the next step of the process is that we're going to go out and start talking detailed contract negotiations with the various vendors that are actually going to supply this. And in most cases, we've got at least two, sometimes three vendors for each of the various products, to make sure that we're getting the best deal. But what's going to happen is that as we go through that process and negotiate detailed contracts, the prices that we're using in the studies may change a little bit. So what will happen then is that in the event that the prices change, it's going to be an iterative process as we continue to go forward, and the numbers that we're recommending and the volumes, that those could change slightly. You know, maybe you'll have an additional 2/10 of a megawatt of a combined cycle being recommended, and 2/10 less of a five-by-16, or vice versa, right? But the idea is to put this in front of our, of our members, make sure that they're aware of it, make sure that we show it to them, so that in the next four to six months, depending upon how long it takes, the contract negotiations, when we come back and we're asking for approvals to actually go start signing contracts, that the whole concept and what we're proposing and how we went about it isn't new. So essentially, what we're asking is, the non-binding resolution essentially just give us the thumbs up or thumbs down on, yeah, it's not binding, the numbers are not final, it's going to continue to be, as I said, an iterative process, as we continue to study, as we continue to talk to the counterparties, but it just gives us a chance to get in front of all of our councils and commissions, again, so that if, when we're coming and seeking approval for contracts, that it's not, you know, something that is totally out of the blue. The other piece that is going to be part of that is that once we get into detailed contract negotiations, there will be some money that the agency will be spending, and will probably be coming back and asking for approvals to go ahead and spend that money. We're estimating it now to be about $75,000, and it's mostly legal costs, frankly, to get through all of the various contract negotiations, draft contracts, and get them ready to sign. For Casson, that would be somewhere between approximately $2,000 and $6,000, depending upon if all three of the parties move forward. Again, there was three other parties, there are two other parties besides us, us, UMEG and CFU. So far, we've got indications that they're all going forward, so we take that $75,000 and essentially take that by a third, and then that third would then be allocated out. So again, it depends a little bit on, you know, where we end up in final discussions with UMEG and CFU, but again, rough estimate on what that would cost in terms of Casson share, ballpark would be $2,000 to $6,000, somewhere in $8,000 to $7,000 at the most, in that range. So, that is all I have, unless you have questions. I know it's, it's a lot of information, I'm throwing it at you very fast. The, like I said, I could talk about, I could go into this for two hours if you want to, and I'm sure nobody wants to do that, but...
It makes more sense hearing the program than reading the...
Okay. Well, and like I said, please feel free, even individually, if you guys have questions or want to walk through kind of the, the larger presentation on kind of what it is and how we, how we got here, I'm happy to do that as well. So, you know, any of our councils and commissions, any individual members of those councils and commissions, please feel free to, you know, either ask Theresa, and she can point you in my direction, or get ahold of the agency, so we can help you make sure. Ultimately, this is your guys' decision on what you want to do. You can agree with us, you can disagree with us, the whole, you know, that's the whole point of the way we're structured as an agency. We want to make sure that as you guys are making that decision, that you're having all your questions answered, or if something doesn't make sense, please ask, and we'll, we'll explain it, so...
Is this a normal procedure to be out this far in front of the contract negotiation?
Yes, yes. Part of the reason that we have to do that is, we are a unique agency in this area, because each individual city gets to select their own power supply. We have about a three-month, two to three-month lag time, or lead time, I guess, if you want to think of it that way, to go out and get the actual approvals from each individual city before we can sign the contract. Whereas if you're a member of an agency like Simpa, or, you know, Southern Minnesota Municipal Power Agency, they're all requirements, so the agency just goes out and signs the contract, and the city is, you know, has to deal with whatever their share of that contract is. You guys have a choice. If, for example, you know, you guys decided, there's absolutely no way we want to share a combined cycle, right? Just tell us no, right? And we'll, we'll work around that, and we'll come up with new recommendations. But that, again, each decision is each individual member's prerogative when it comes to what their power supply is. So there is an additional process, there is additional time that we need to incorporate into the process. And all the various counterparties we've talked to are aware of that, and they're okay with that, but again, that's why we're here, that's why we're asking for a non-binding agreement, but it's just to make sure that it's in front of everybody, and that when we do get them, come back, and we can come back as many times as you want us to, or we need to, but when we get to the point where we're actually requesting approval to sign contracts, no way, surprise.
Can I ask a question?
Yes.
Two quick questions.
Yes.
One is, your recommended portfolio list, wind is 4.8, but your graph has 3.9, which is what you're recommending?
Oh, did I screw that up? I'm sorry. It is the 4.8.
4.8, okay. And then, just wondering about, other than the wind, are all of them...
Oh, I'm sorry, yeah, that was, I, I had 12 of these that I did, so...
Oh, I see. Yep, well, just so we know, it's a fill-in.
It is, yes, the 4.8.
And then, all, all of them except wind are all natural gas, or what's the source?
The source of, the fixed-priced energy products are just that, it's an energy-only purchase, and we're buying it from a counterparty, and it's their obligation to deliver that to us. It's just energy.
Okay, thank you.
Combined cycle is obviously fueled by natural gas. The reality of it is that most of the fixed-priced energy is going to be supplied from gas resources as well, it's just that when you buy that type of contract, you're not worrying about, it's not off of a specific unit or a specific type of resource, you're just saying, you know, I'm buying energy, it's your obligation to deliver it to me.
Okay, thank you.
And you keep talking about gas, is there anything in here about coal? I mean, I'm sure coal's getting kind of dumped out, but are you, are you pursuing that too?
As of right now, we are not. We did get coal responses in the bid, and right now, today, the prices are attractive, frankly. However, part of what we're, part of the reason we're recommending we avoid coal is because of all the uncertainty associated with what is going to happen to coal as part of the whole EPA Clean Power Plan. And that is up in the air, that is still ongoing, despite the Supreme Court's stay of, was that last week or two weeks ago now? Essentially, all that does is it pushes it out another couple of years, potentially. Now, that can all change from a political standpoint, depending upon what happens with the election, but because we can't plan for that, we don't know what that future's going to look like, the recommendation is, at this point, to essentially avoid it. And what we're finding is that on a long-term basis, you can get nearly the same cost by pursuing this type of portfolio as you would with coal, without taking on all of those associated regulatory risks by going to coal. And it's another reason why, frankly, now it's time to be buying, because prices are low, so let's try to lock it up now, and lock it up for a long-term contract, a long-term purchase. Coal, the uncertainty around coal is, and there's no way, there's no way that if, if you were a seller of coal, and you wanted to, that there's, there's no way you could, could sign a contract without laying some of those risks off onto the buyer, just because they don't know what the future's going to look like either. And it may turn out that five years from now, or 10 years from now, that we're back to where we were. My personal opinion, it's not an agency, my personal opinion is, I don't think that's likely. Something will happen, whether it's going to be, you know, somewhere between zero and what the EPA is proposing now, is probably, it may not be what it's proposed, or what the rule looks like today, but I, I believe that, you know, there's, there's going to be continued pressure on coal, I guess is the simplest way to say it.
I think something that we need to look at, I wouldn't make any decision, I don't think, kind of myself, I mean, I need to study this, I can't go by one, 20 minutes of hearing for myself, I don't know what you all think, but...
Well, the resolution, just to enter at what just happened, I mean, we're not buying anything.
Not spending any money on the resolution at all?
No, no.
I mean, I mean, I would say that we move forward with the resolution and get these guys...
Okay.
Because I'm a student, remember what these guys, I mean...
Yeah, the, the next step in reality is, when we get to the point where we're spending money on contracts, and we're hiring lawyers to draft contracts, and we need to, we'll be coming back, and that $2,000 to $6,000 that I mentioned earlier, we'll be coming back and asking for that. So that, again, you'll see us at least two more times, and maybe more, depending upon how the whole process shakes out, so...
We'll be asking for the $2,000 or to go forward at that point.
To go forward at that point.
Not to, not to, that we...
Correct, correct. We will ask for that approval in advance before we start paying the money, correct?
Okay.
I mean, in my opinion, we'd be moving forward with the resolution, and approve that, and get you guys working on that.
Okay.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Another discussion? Can I entertain a motion then to approve the agreement?
I'll make that motion.
I'll second that.
Motion's been made for the CMMPA Power Supply Coalition Agreement. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed nay. Motion passed. Next up, public forum. Go right into the public hearing. Open a public hearing on vacation of easement for A&amp;A Electric.
Thank you. A&amp;A Electric has filed an application seeking to amend the flat of the South Bend Commercial Park. That request will come before you later. But this related public hearing is for, is that currently lot one, two, and three of block one exists in the South Bend Commercial Park. Each one of those lots has a five-foot utility easement, the full circumference of one. If the request goes through to combine those three into one lot, there would be no need under our current ordinance for the, the two middle property lines to have easements around them. And the applicant is asking for permission from, approved from the state council to vacate those easements. And at this point, this is the time for the, the public to weigh in on their opinion.
Anybody else? The public have anything to add, ask? Okay. Then we'll go into the liquor license renewals. We have a resolution that's been made here, changed it to for all liquor establishments, the American Legion Pulse 333, Events by Sager, Gideon Hospitality Group, Doing Businesses Daniels Restaurant, Galuska Inc., Doing Businesses P3, repeat, for liquor licenses. Does anybody in the public have anything they'd like to, say your question on that?
Are you just talking Sunday afternoon? Because I believe it's state law, you can't, they can't sell Sunday morning.
They would abide by the state law.
Yeah, it's got to be by the state law. Yeah, we can't, we can't change that, yeah. No. Any other discussion here? Okay, then I'll close the public hearing. Can I entertain then a motion for the vacation of easement for A&amp;A Electric?
I'll make that motion.
Sorry. Motion's been made for the vacation of easement for A&amp;A Electric. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed nay. Motion passed. And on the liquor license renewals, can I get a motion, entertain a motion on that?
Motion.
Sorry. Motion's been made for the liquor license renewals for American Legion Pulse 333, Events by Sager, Gideon Hospitality Group, and Galuska Inc. Doing Businesses P3, repeat. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed nay. Motion passed. Next up is committee report.
No, I don't see Art.
Art's not here.
I talked to Art today.
I talked to Art today, and he was going to have a special meeting, and have days to get into, and he has a few more estimates that he was going to bring in front of us, but he'll just come to the next meeting.
Oh, okay.
And he wanted me to mention that they were attaching a rebar to the ceiling.
Oh.
One of the things he wanted to report, in the library.
That's where the rebar is going.
If anybody didn't know where Art would go.
Okay, no business, new business. Resolution for vacation of easement.
You did channel that, didn't you?
Resolution for minor subdivision.
As I mentioned previously, A&amp;A Electric is seeking to amend the plat to combine lots 1, 2, and 3 of Block 1, so that there is room for potential expansion of their building and their business. Public hearing was held by the Planning Commission at their last meeting, and it comes to you with the recommendation of the Planning Commission that this minor subdivision be approved.
Any discussion on that? Entertain a motion then for the resolution for the minor subdivision?
Motion.
Second. Motion's been made for the resolution for the minor subdivision. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, nay. Motion passed. Next up, we got the offer from Mike Marty to purchase the Digger. I believe this is probably the discussion to start with. What was the offer, it was like, what, seven?
Seven thousand.
Did we, I mean, did we advertise that enough?
Yes.
I mean, where did we put it?
Well, we put it, so we put it on the Leica Minnesota City For Sale site, and then we put it on Facebook to look to that site for more information, or give us a call with more information.
Do contractors go on Minnesota, Minnesota cities to buy stuff?
Yes, they do.
Do they go? A lot, or?
Well, they would go, they would go if they saw our, they would go if they saw our postings, that's where it was. But they also go because there is, there is used equipment on there. So cities do list all kinds of miscellaneous equipment there.
But I would say for the majority, because I would never, I wouldn't want to go there. I would say that it needs to be put out there.
Lonnie, you're in construction, do you guys, you go look at that all the time?
Yep.
Okay. I don't know, what do you guys think, I guess?
I think it's a little too cheap to like go over that for seven thousand dollars. I would say either call an offer or put it out there somewhere advertising. I mean, the guys know how to put it on Craigslist, because I saw some stuff on Craigslist before, so, you know, I mean, that's where the majority of people are going to go. Sort of the trader books, or.
What did we estimate that? Did somebody ever give an estimate? Was it around $10,000?
Yeah, you know, right around $10,000, asking price right around $10,000, so.
We had, we're going to have to, once we keep this, if we put it back out, we're going to have to look at putting, paying for tabs on it, even though we're not going to be putting it on the road. I mean, it's just another expense, I'm just wondering.
Why would we have to put tabs on it?
They expire in February.
Okay.
So then, that's another expense that we have to look at. So it's something we've got to look at, you know, how much do we keep spending, you know, we have tabs.
How much are the tabs?
We don't have to drive it.
No, I mean, we're not using, so we don't have to use it.
If you're not using it, you can sit there and shop for it.
Still have to have insurance.
How much are the tabs?
You don't have to have tabs for insurance.
No, you don't, no you don't. You don't have to have a tab.
You have to have insurance to get tabs, but you have to have tabs to get insurance.
I'd check it out if I were you.
I know you don't have to.
Well, I'd make sure. If that's an expense, we've got to make sure we, you know, looking, I don't know how much you are, I mean, then we have to, possibly any more insurance that we're going to be putting on it. I'm not, I'm not afraid of selling it. If we can get more money, I'm all for it. I just want to make sure we know that there could be some possible more.
I think we should try a little bit longer here to put it out with some more ads.
I'll have, I'll check with Krista where she did put it, and then we'll explain that.
I think we'd also entertain splitting that between the 10 and the 7.
Sure. If you want us to go on or off.
Absolutely. You know?
Okay, so you would accept $8,500?
I thought that'd be, well, I hold, I thought fair was, $10,000 was a pretty fair price on it, for what it is, it's always been chatted, and less than $30,000 a mile, no?
Right.
I mean, it is a good year.
It's had a pretty good life for its city, it's a pretty good unit.
Okay, so just, I understand, so I will go back to Mike Marty and ask him if he's willing to pay $8,500, and then if not, we will put it back out and make sure we get a little more.
That sounds good. Okay. Next up, resolution to support Rochester Regional Airport bonding bill.
At the last Southeast Minnesota, Leica Municipalities meeting, we had met, and Rochester came forward, and they want to put bonding to the state. To keep the Rochester Airport as an international airport, they have to spend over $10 million. They're asking for the surrounding communities just to say, yes, we think that's a great idea, because it'll help support us. They're not asking for any money, they're from us, they're just asking from the state. They're going to put in $5 million of it themselves, they're just asking the state for the other $5 million.
Yeah, it's a no-brainer, I mean, that's.
And if they don't spend it, they don't get it. Then they lose their destination.
Right. No one more for that? Any other discussion?
Oh, I think everyone agrees with Andy there.
Yes, very good. Okay, then entertain a motion then on the resolution for support Rochester Regional Airport Bonding Bill?
I'll make that motion.
I'll second it.
Motion's been made for the resolution support Rochester Regional Airport Bonding Bill. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, nay. Motion passed. Next up, street reconstruction discussion.
You can't see it. It's underground, but that's what they're starting to look like. I think we pulled that out of Sixth Avenue when we did it. We've got, yeah.
Yeah, that's actually one of the good ones.
Yeah, so we've got 50 blocks of substandard street infrastructure in town. They're well past their life expectancy. Water mains, sewer mains, storm sewers, streets are all in the same sort of district. At $100,000 per block, that is a lot to fix it, and it's not going to get any cheaper. I would like to recommend that a comprehensive analysis and/or a subject plan for the street infrastructure repair get started. This can be accomplished by Charlie, Brandon, or Mike. There's a video, if anybody wants to see it, I can't remember how old it is, but.
Ten, ten years.
Ten years. Can you see that online, or do you have to come in?
Well, Plan CD, we can see about uploading, uploading commercials.
It's, it's pretty boring, but we-
Yeah, but it just, it kind of shows how bad, shows how bad.
Unless you're in the business, it doesn't change.
Yeah, so, you know, I'd like to see if we can get that going, and let's get us started before we're forced into doing something that's-
And it's not, it's going to get just more expensive each year, so it has to get, it has to get done.
We've started looking at Fifth Avenue. We had a residential meeting a couple of years back, we had a discussion with them, and I think we would, I would like to see it just continue on with Fifth Avenue right now, or whatever the plan, or the comprehensive plan, or subjective plan comes up.
I think originally, our last plan really wasn't very subjective at all. It started at Eighth Avenue and worked its way east. Seventh was kind of the shortest place, so we didn't do that one, we went from eight to six, and actually fifth. That's one, I don't know, Brandon, could we get anything done this year?
Do you mind if I approach?
Sure.
We could get something done likely this year, obviously we'd have to move forward on anything if we decide, yeah, correct. Other thing for discussion forth is also Municipal State A-Rub 2, which is kind of changing the game, if you will. But maybe Chuck, to kind of talk on your point there, on kind of my thoughts of city engineering, how do we, how do we wrap these things together, how do we, how do we get the comprehensive review and analysis? In my opinion, that'd be done by, by all three of us, by myself, Charlie, Nancy, Teresa. Sit down and look at the city as a comprehensive approach, specifically a pavement management plan, how are the streets in town? Is Fifth the worst street? Is that where we want to spend our money? Some of that work has been done, I don't think it's quite been pulled together. From there, from that management plan, we can develop the ratings for all the streets, start the prioritization, excuse me, and then also budget for the next five to 10 years for the street maintenance. And then, all the time, we would be considering utilities, we want to do a utility analysis, see what's underneath the streets, obviously we want to build a nice new expensive street on garbage utilities, and vice versa. We don't want to replace a street, replace utilities where we have a good street. So those are the things that we balance to come up with a comprehensive plan. And then, from there, we would move forward, let's say we identified a potential project, in this case, we're starting third, fourth, and fifth. From there, we'd develop a feasibility report, and that would kind of hone in on that budgetary number, and that would also be needed if we do any special assessment process. From there, it gives myself, as an engineer, more time and effort and energy on my end to develop the budgetary cost. So that's how, that's how we look at it from a city engineering perspective, and that's kind of what I recommended to council on how to move something forward, move something forward if we do something. Now furthermore, discussion I had today with Teresa, how do we, how do we start this, and how do we begin, begin kind of pulling stuff together? And what I recommended her, what I offered to her today was that I'm willing to attend the council workshop and go over some of these things. Sit down and inform the council, and staff, and sit down and just go over, go over, and we'll talk about it in an informal manner. Not only that, give you kind of some of the updates on where I have some projects, we've got a lot of projects going on, we have some of these things that I'm seeing coming down the pipe, if you will, so we can kind of start gathering, gathering projects together and see where we're going the next couple of years. So that's kind of my big picture thought, happy to talk about it in more depth at this meeting or having said at future meetings, so that's kind of what we've been talking at a staff level, so.
Yeah, I'm just interested, let's get started.
What'd I miss on seven? What'd they do on seven?
Nothing, but because that's a shorter street, and doesn't have much free facilities on it.
Doesn't that have a bunch of curbs that still go on it?
Oh, yeah, it's, it's not, it's not, it's not a great street. It just wasn't included in this process, because it's such a different street. But eventually, we're going to have to do it. What we're talking about, and what we have discussed, is for this year, kind of a two-pronged approach, where we can take a shot, and it's getting very late in the game, take a shot at trying to rebuild Fifth this year. In the meantime, we've got all the streets and infrastructure in what's seen, considered the R2 district in Cassin, which goes from Eighth Avenue Northwest over to Third Northeast, and pretty much everything south. So those are areas. I mean, that's, some of that stuff has been in there a hundred years. We're going to have to do it eventually. What we're talking about here is a systematic approach to identify where the biggest problems are, where the most bang for our buck is. Because what we'll end up doing, Lonnie's done this before, we end up with a great big project up on Fifth Avenue, in the meantime, we've got people putting out fires all over Third Avenue Northeast. So, you know, we're spending money all over. But if we, if we wanted to do something, I would say try to go for Fifth this year and do the analysis so we know objectively what we're going to do next year.
I think we should move on that way, and start getting talks, get the talks going.
Sounds good?
Yep.
Thank you.
Thank you very much.
Can I ask a question? How come aren't you starting with like the oldest section of town? Are we on the wrong side of the tracks, or what? I mean, southwest is the oldest part, right, Cassin? And we've had nothing but trouble with, you know, the stuff, so why are we going up into northwest and northeast and all that newer?
When I asked that question, it's, why, why did we start Six, Fifth, and all that in that area? And the answer I got was because of, and it's, I know it happens all over the city, but the, the water seeping in seems to be the worst in that area than it was in any other part of the town at the time they were picked. So, that's, that was 2008, you know, okay? So, I mean, that's, that's something that's-
But you do bring up exactly the point I was trying to make.
Right.
Rather, because, I would like to see a show of hands, who has the worst street in town in front of their house? Everybody. What we would like to do is put some numbers to it, so that we can say definitively, this is the worst, and this should be Texas.
Yeah, we know, I mean, you just said issues with Leicester.
Yeah.
So we'll, we'll look at all, everybody, I mean-
Everybody, yeah, everybody.
Everybody's going to get looking at it.
That's what Mike, you were telling me about, how you were going to grade them, you were going to look at the streets, and look at the curb gutter, and look at everything underground, you know, and determine which actually are the worst, and that's going to be what we try to follow there, you know. And don't forget, our sewer expansion out there has do a lot to the water that's leaking into the, the old sewers here, you know, for the, our high-flow days, so it's also, it's a vicious circle we're in here, so.
And sometimes too, you know, you look at your street, and you'll think it looks bad, but then sometimes you look under, underneath is worse, and sometimes you don't see that. It's the big picture, you got, that's hard to look at.
When they started on Six, they started from the south, and every time they started digging, there was, it wasn't smelling very good, you know? But, yeah, that's great.
Okay. All right, moving on. Mayor's report, I just had a few things. One, I got a nice letter from the Dodge Center ambulance people on the assistance they got from our firemen, had a situation involved, and I believe it was a heart deal, and very happy with the way our guys handled it, and basically, the guy's still here, so thanks to our guys. So, I just wanted to make sure guys know that, thank you. People sure knows, appreciate it, so, thank you. Another one I wanted to touch, and this is nothing to do with the city, but I go up to Prairie Meadows every now and then and visit some folks I know there, and there's been a lot of fraud and scam phone calls to them up there, and they're all over the place. And unfortunately, some people have sent, got caught and got paid. So, just if you can, maybe put a bug in people's ears, you know, the IRS calls, they don't call people. They don't call, so, you know, just maybe help some of these folks out, let them know that, be careful. Don't just, I know a few people that have lost quite a bit of money, and we need to kind of look out for each other on that. The other thing I had was, and there's, hopefully there's no more snow this year, but we got to make sure we keep these vehicles off the road when these guys are plowing. It, I know it's got, got to be a big issue again, so if you can remind people that it's snow, is get them in your driveway. And the other thing that I had was, good luck to the TM wrestling team, they head out tonight, and hopefully come back with a state title and a bunch of state champions. Nothing on administrator's report, nothing on the engineer's report, nothing personnel, correspondence, fire department quarters in there.
One quick question, but when is the city council working meeting? Because I know it was re-planned, March, that's like dating, um, the public's work. Thank you.
All right, well, thank you very much for coming, everyone, meeting's adjourned.